Okay, let's open the meeting of the Cold Spring zoning board of appeals. This is a five member board. Two members could not be present tonight. Three are, three are here. So we do have a quorum. For those on Zoom, I'm Eric Worth, the chair. And with me is Jesse St. Charles and Mary Ann Remy.
Hello.
Hi, here I am. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Very well.
My apologies for joining from our car, but I'm on my way back from a site visit. So happy to be able to join over Zoom. I appreciate that.
Hello, everyone. This is Crystal Wheatley.
Hi, Crystal.
Happy to join as well via Zoom. I was trying to make it up there to you guys. Always a wonderful drive, but just wasn't feasible today.
Yeah, especially not in this heat, I imagine.
No, not at all.
I hope the room there is air conditioned.
Yes.
So let's start with our first agenda item, which is the workshop on the application for 37 Fair Street. And all three of you are here representing the applicants. So why don't, why doesn't one of you start by just briefly introducing your project to us, telling us what it's about?
Well, I was actually going to just give a little brief introduction, but to get into the details about the project, I guess I have to defer to Miriam about that.
Yes. Hi, so this is not our first time in front of the committee, although it's been a couple of years. I'm the architect on the renovation of 37 Fair Street, just outside of Main Street in Cold Spring. For Nina Chanel Abney, who's an artist, we came before the committee previously to approve our change of use from the old car dealership and garage to be an artist studio and residence. We are finally, after several delays from COVID and other issues, approaching completion of the project, which is very exciting. And we are seeking to install a new fence and gate around the property. Nina was able to acquire a parcel of land from the village of Cold Spring adjacent to the rear of her property, bringing the rear yard to approximately 64 feet deep. It had previously been only 25 feet behind the built footprint of the building. And we're requesting a variance tonight. The fence that we have around the perimeter of the property complies with the six foot high maximum height. However, there's a driveway and entry into her garage. And we're seeking to increase the height of the side yard fence and the gate, which also is in the side yard, to be the same height as the rear yard fence, up to six feet from the required four foot height. And this request is kind of twofold. In part, it is aesthetic. You can see the fence kind of coming around the side of the property adjacent to the neighbor. And we would like for that to be at the same height as the rest of the fence enclosing the rear yard. But also, you know, the building itself is in a kind of prominent location is unusual that it's both for commercial and private use, but it's not open to the public. And so we are hoping to increase the kind of side yard fence and gate to meet the six feet of the rear yard in order to increase the privacy and to signal that is not, not, not a building that's open to the public.
Erica, I'd like to add to what Miriam stated that, and I agree that it is really a combination of aesthetics and practicality. And there is just some issues as well with the fact of the, the flow of traffic, a lot of the trail runners, walkers and passerbyers, even during the course of the instruction, construction process. Many of them have stopped along the way and, you know, inquired with, because there's currently nothing in place there or minimally in place there. It's, it's just kind of been in a sort of an attractive sort of structure that attracts attention. And we think the minimal two feet increase of the fence and gate structure up the front and side, we feel that that is inconsistent with, in the purview of the board here with what would be in the best interest of the applicant, and it would be a minimally intrusive and not contrary to the goals of Cold Spring and the code, the village's code. So that's the, the quest of, you know, what we're asking for here today.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is a workshop, so the board is not going to make any judgments about the merits of the application. We're, we're just going to make sure we understand what is at stake and that all the issues are clear for everybody and that your application is in the best condition to be given to the public for a hearing. And so I went through the checklist and the application looks complete to me. And I want to ask the other board members, do you have any, did you guys, do you have anything more you'd like to see in the application? Or is anything that seems unclear or not sufficient?
There was a detail on some of the drawings or the overlays on the pictures about where, where the fence would sit. I know that the, that the, the front of the property and maybe the side is also not in its final form and maybe final grade and height. Can you provide more detail about where we would expect like the ground to be? In other words, like where, where we will be measuring four feet from or six feet from?
Yeah, I don't have spot elevations currently. But based on sort of what we, what we've observed on site, I would say that final grade from the street surface will be about, and, and final grade along the sidewalk. So currently there's sort of excavation that's happened for a rain garden that we've installed to deal with stormwater runoff along the street. And we have fully poured the new sidewalk that was not present in front of this property previously. So we have a bit of infilling to do. I can definitely find that information specifically, but if I had to guess, I would say that the new grade after we slope up from the driveway to the side yard where we're looking to have the six foot fence would be approximately nine to 12 inches above the drive surface of Fair Street itself. Once we install the new driveway and kind of regrade that area.
Do you have a sense of how that differs from the current, and there is a slight, there, there is a slope to the drive right now. Do you have a sense?
It is essentially redoing what's there now. So we're planning to demolish the current blacktop and resurface that area to be almost exactly what it is now.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I actually have a question, just for clarity. Is there, would it be helpful if we gave something brief on that? Maybe a few sentences on that? Do you think that would be helpful with the application?
You mean the nature of the grade?
Correct.
Was talking about, wouldn't hurt any, yeah, any extra information. I mean hypothetically, someone may wonder, someone in, in the public may wonder about that and, and be reassured or whatever, just be better informed by that information. Doesn't hurt.
Okay, I think what I would propose to do then is that we would make a section drawing through the driveway from the street through the sidewalk up to the garage entry level. And we can show the building and also the proposed gate height in elevation beyond that section, and that should be fairly illustrative of what we're proposing.
Great.
Okay, that sounds great, Miriam.
One other minor adjustment, I, I looked at your list of neighbors to be sent notices and it looked good to me. It looked complete. With one exception, you'll need to add Village of Cold Spring. Even though that may seem redundant, they do own the property adjoining you behind. So just to be complete, you should just send the same notice to Village of Cold Spring care of the village hall here as you do to all the other neighbors.
Okay, great. Noted.
And the way that works, the notices, the public notices, once we decide on a hearing date, I will draw up the hearing notice, which is just one, one sheet and I'll email it to you and then you can mail it, print it and mail it then to the people on the list. And I'll include instructions in, in my email message about exactly how to do that and what we need to, as proof of mailing.
Okay.
Okay.
Karen, do you have anything?
I have a question that's not necessarily about the application, but it's a mixed use building. Could you just describe what the use is?
So it's an artist's studio working space and her residence as well.
So it's private. So it's a
It is private. Yeah, it's, it's a live work building.
It's, it's not used for public exhibitions, right?
Not used for public exhibitions.
I got the same question in front of the, in front of the other board that we appeared in front of on behalf of the lot line adjustment. And that was the same question that seemed to come up over and over again. Cause it looks like it would be somewhere where people would be able to come in and look and observe, but it's not that kind of function.
Um, I, I think I've covered everything. Anyone else have anything to bring up?
Have you looked at other options? In addition to increasing the height of the fence?
Well, that, we can talk about that at the hearing itself.
You want to do that then?
Yeah, to explore the, the whole question of alternatives, which is an important, that, that would come up during the hearing. And right now we're just evaluating their application.
Okay.
The way they want to, their application shows what they want. And then, once it's final, then we can all start to, you know, analyze it.
Okay, it's helpful to know that we should be prepared to discuss alternatives and have a response to those specific questions.
Anytime you request a variance, you have to be prepared because the key, one of the key things a ZBA does is weigh competing interests, the interest of the community and seeing the zoning code complied with versus the interest of property owner who's, who wants an exception. So the, the board is going to ask you, you know, isn't there some other way you can achieve your desired goal without an exception, a variance? So you should be prepared to explain why you haven't done other, used other options that you might have had. How they don't satisfy your needs.
Right. Okay, that's helpful. We will, we will, we will prepare that for the conversation.
So really the last issue to cover is the date of the public hearing. That's the next stage is we will have a hearing. Members of the public can come, they can speak for or against, they'll have, they will have had a chance to see the application. So Cold Spring introduced a new zoning code this year and your project is the first one to come to us with the new code. So we're, one of the changes is the, the time for notice of, we have to publish a notice in the newspaper about the hearing and the new code, the new code calls for a 10 day advance publication. So because of that, we can't have the hearing at the next ZBA meeting, which is in two weeks. As soon as we can have it, it's in four weeks.
Okay.
Now that would be October, October 5th, same time, same place. And that's exactly four weeks from now. Does that? Is that acceptable to the applicants?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Your, your mailing of the notices to neighbors has to go out 10 days before that date. So you do have some time. That would mean at the latest, it would have to go into the mail September 25th, or sorry, you know, one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, September 25th, but the sooner the better.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as we receive the, the notice from you, we will print it and send it out via, I, I assume certified return mail. Okay.
Okay. Great. So that's everything. We will have the hearing in two, in four weeks. And are you, so you will be doing some minor updates to the application, I gather, mainly involving this grade, issue of the grade. Yeah, if you would send us that, just update your file with, with the additional, additional information and then we'll, we'll proceed with that.
Eric, do you need a physical copy of it or just over a PDF over email is okay?
Yeah, we do. We, I, I think at least the village needs paper, a paper copy. And then for the meeting itself, it is helpful to have it in front of us. So yeah, the six, the standard six copies would be very useful or necessary.
Okay, no problem.
But if it's, if it's just, if you're just adding a page or two, you could just add the new material. Is that, Karen, will that work? If they just, if they just want to add, yeah, if they just want to add something, can you just keep this and then add what they send?
Yes.
Is that practical for you? Okay, so if you're just adding, then that's, that's enough to send the new material, six copies of the new material.
Noted. Thank you.
Any questions from the applicants?
None from me.
None from me.
All right.
Thank you so much for your time. We'll see you in four weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Let's turn next to the minutes. Well, actually item two on the agenda was about updating the ZBA application form. And I'm going to suggest that we table that, given that people aren't here. Also, I didn't get as much of a chance to to kind of draft something. I want to draft something that are just out of like references or just on a date, they can be updated. But I think that the in particular, there's this, the application form has a table that the applicant is supposed to fill in with dimensions, like all dimension, new dimension. I think that's kind of, it's very confusing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And also doesn't
It's very confusing to me.
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't even apply, but application like theirs here, it doesn't even apply. So I think that could be made a lot more user friendly. So let's, let's keep work, let's work on that in the future.
Okay.
So number three on the agenda was the draft minutes.
A long time ago.
Luckily not much happened at that meeting, nothing, nothing crucial.
Because I sure don't remember.
Well, that's, that's why I didn't press to deal with this, recall meeting just to do this in the interim.
Oh, that's really fun.
So yeah, it's really just, I mean, there was the resolution, which we simply approved without changes. And then we approved minutes without changes. And so why don't you take a minute and see, see what you think, if there's anything.
So this was a similar situation where they wanted, it was very similar.
Exactly, yeah.
And
Because it really is interesting how similar they are.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not identical. There are, there are differences, but yeah.
But it's still, yeah.
Yeah, it's funny that, how this comes up.
And I don't recall anything. It looks good to me. I really, I
As not being present last time, I cannot vouch for the accuracy.
All it says is we haven't filled your seat yet.
Yeah, yeah.
That's way going, going way back.
Yeah.
I, I did want to adjust under the sequencing, the referral sequencing, it says a discussion about developing a more efficient process for applicants who are referred to two or more boards. I think what I meant, what I was trying to say was it's not so much, the issue was not efficiency. It was more that clarity or when an applicant submits a proposal for a building permit and it's, and it's, he's building it, co-inspector rejects it and may refer the applicant to more than one board, up to three, there are three potential boards. Often it's just two, like the ZBA and the historic district board. The applicant just gets a, just gets those two referrals and no, no other explanation. And so it's not a matter of efficiency, but just confusion for a non-professional applicant, a layperson, who doesn't have an architect helping. What, what does this mean? Two boards, do I go to first one, then the other? Can I go simultaneously? So that was, the discussion was more that question of helping the applicant. So what I was thinking of rewording this as was
A clear, more clear process.
Yeah, I was thinking about saying a discussion among the village boards about helping applicants better understand how to proceed when the code enforcement officer refers them to two or more boards.
Yeah. I mean, I don't even know. What, who would you go to first? That's on the
Well, unfortunately that was, this discussion never led to anything. I don't, I, I mean, Karen, is there, has there been any, I mean, partly it's been a change, the change in the administration on the former mayor wanted one thing and current mayor doesn't agree with that. And I, I've sided with the current mayor. Karen, is there now any new policy on this question?
On referral process?
When there are two, when the applicant receives referrals to two boards, you typically historic and ZBA. Is there any guidance about sequence? Can it be simultaneous? Do you know if there's
I don't think, I think that the focus has been so much on the new code and I'm not sure that they ever got back to discussing or resolving that.
I understand too. I haven't heard anything. So, I mean, it's kind of a, a fine point. It doesn't happen that often. A lot of times applicants do have an architect helping them. So and, and they can always ask and it actually can vary from one application to another. It can make sense to do it one way for one application, another way for another. It's just that currently the applicant gets no idea at all. They've got to be kind of proactive. So anyway, so I'll
Really good idea, yeah.
I'll make
So it'll need to be a more rubric for them to make a decision.
Well, that's the question. How they should, how it should be given to them, the explanation. At what point and in what form? So that it's not forgotten about. That's one thing with all, with changing personnel, changing board members. Yeah. So it's so easy for these little things to get, just people stop doing it. So it's got to be built into the process. I, I was advocating putting it on the building permit application form. So the first thing, everyone sees that, it's the first thing in the process. And it could be just something at the top that says, if you receive a referral, this board may, or this application may result in a referral to more than one board. In that case, you could do X, Y, Z.
That's a very good idea.
But you never, it's a big deal to get that through. So it hasn't happened yet.
I will check with Jeff and see if there was any further discussion, but I haven't heard anything since that initial idea came up.
It's not urgent. So Karen, I will update the minutes with this change and then add my signature and send you back a final copy.
Well, should we, since we don't have he here, I think in order to vote to approve them, we have to have people here.
A quorum.
Yes, because John wasn't, wasn't there on that day. Jesse was not a member yet. So we could, we can always just do the vote when we meet on the 21st.
That's a, that's annoying. Waiting all this time? We can't do it?
I know. It would be really, you, in an email, as I seem to recall, you suggested a, a work session to look at how the changes in the new code have an impact on what we do. That would be
Yeah.
Oh, you're arousing, yes.
I'm just trying to contemplate what
How to do that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly build it in to our regular meetings.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
I mean, a meeting like tonight's is short enough. There's an ordeal to build in. And it's something that I think is useful to do, kind of revisit over and over, instead of trying to do it all in a two hour headache losing session.
So that would be great. And it would be, it's helpful to me. I can read something, but if, if there's a discussion about it, then that's
Differences, it's, yeah, I think it's important to like hit the differences.
Yeah. I think the, the planning board is also wanting to have kind of a training scheduled once they complete getting a new member on the board, because there are so many changes.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, obviously the biggest single category of change involves the marathon site. And that's going to, that's a big deal for the planning boards. It really doesn't affect us because anything that happens there is going to be kind of new. But for the, yeah.
There, there's also, the planning board becomes a lot more, has become a lot more central to a lot of the processes in the new code. So the special permit designations for different uses, I think there's more of those in the new code than in the old code. So they'll also just need a heads up on, on new workflows to expect that they, that they were never receiving before.
One, just for the general, every day to day bread and butter work of the ZBA, one key difference and to know is to make a kind of a shortcut is obviously, there are new zones, new zones have been created, which you can see on the map. And there is now a, a single table in the back at the end of the chapter, 134, that gives That um gives all the dimensional requirements for all the zones. It's all in one place now. It used to be in the old code. There were, it was in, it was, they were buried, the dimensions were buried in text. You'd have to go to the appropriate subsection for each zone. Um, but now really just, you, it's just a workaday. Trying to remind yourself what the setbacks are for a given.
Yeah.
It's just all in that one table at the end.
Great. I bet you did that, right?
No, that was.
Sounds like that movie. That's great.
We filled in a lot of it, so. Uh, I think that maybe something else that related to the, to the training is also. Just a, a mechanism for recording each board's feedback on. On the, the new law, so that we can hopefully provide that back to the village board.
Yeah.
At some point, because. You know, it's not, we, we know that it's not, that it's not perfect and it's first in differentiation and. I would expect that um the sooner we can collect that feedback, the better for the village, so.
Yeah, they do, there was talk of at the six month point of having a, okay, like an update. Having the trustees do an update. We, we did find, hear about one error. Major error. Has to be corrected. So that um, I'll show you, um, because you, you should know about it. Want to get some rain?
I hope it's not inside. Well, we had it with the air conditioning.
This, so this is at the end on that, that table of. Here's that table I mentioned, um, at the end which has, um. So under B one. B one is, okay, B one here.
Yeah.
Stories, maximum stories of the building is one and a half would be one. Uh, which is, was a mistake. If, all the way through, it was two and a half in the drafts. And then at some point it accidentally got changed to one and a half.
Oh.
Which, I mean, B one is out there on Main Street and most of the stories are, most of the ones are two, two and a half.
Yeah.
So the one and a half is just a ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, wow, that's too bad.
And it's ironic, because James Hartford at River Architects is just now doing a renovation of. A building that has the plant store in it.
Uh-huh, right. He's running into it.
He looks up and thought, oh my God, I can't even, my building doesn't even go on.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, that.
So is there, they're gonna, are they gonna accelerate that amendment?
Yeah, I thought they were, but nothing's happened yet. Catleyan knows about it. Problem is how to do, it seems like a small thing, but it's got to go through process. But we can't just, I, I thought they could just say. I thought they could just say, they could just vote to do it, but I guess there has to be a public hearing. Or change, any change to a law.
Yeah. But at least it's an amendment, so the actual diff can be a single page. Uh, or what the, what the amendment is.
Right, right.
So that, so that's at least good. I guess it was maybe a question of whether or not there, there's. Whether there's other things to tech then, given the, given the process that's required.
Yeah, they're gonna have the process, try to do as much as possible. Okay, um, would someone like to um move that we. Uh, close the meeting?
I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second, all in favor?
Aye. Nice to see you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.